Mayor Deidre just texted, she's trying to get in.
Is she having trouble? Oh, it's six o'clock. I'm sorry.
Yeah, she's trying, so.
Okay, a little.
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson is working on getting on locked on to.
Okay, we'll wait on, we'll wait, we'll wait before we get started. I'm sorry, I was deeply reading. Reading real quick. We'll wait another minute.
So we can start telling jokes or doing a tap dance or something.
That's for you, Tom.
Say you tap dance, Tom.
Deidre's on now. Hi, Deidre.
Hi. There she is.
I made it.
There's Denise.
Hi, Deidre.
Hey, how are you?
We are good, thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Thompson's the only one that's out at the moment.
We're working on it. He should be coming on here pretty quick.
Okay, just let us know when he is on and I will, we'll proceed after that. Take notice, you got a little bit.
Just a little bit longer. Then we'll be okay.
You rocking that pink shirt there, Martha?
Hey. Roommates wear pink, don't they?
That's what they say.
That's correct.
Please, I'm talking for myself.
No problem. Just let us know when, uh, Councilman Thompson's on. I know he's having technical issues.
Yes, sir, we're still working on it.
Yes, ma'am. Everybody just bear with us. At the moment, we're having one of our members of the council that is trying to get on and we're on a holding pattern so we can get him on and we'll proceed as soon as I get notification that he is on. Everybody just, uh, share stories. Tell a joke. I think you know here in a minute, uh, Councilman Spars is gonna break into dance.
I thought Tom was tap dancing.
I will tell you that I have, I have a friend named David. He lost his ID, so now he's this dad.
No, no, no.
Hurry, Steve, hurry.
I think it's Harry, Steve, hurry.
Yes, I have a deal with my grandson at the time machine at seven thirty, so hurry.
Yeah. Good, Denise, I'm, I'm with you on that. I don't have a date with mine, but if it goes that long, I'll be ready to end it too.
Right. Yeah, we, we, uh, we're in Dallas, so we did the whole zoo thing yesterday and the time machine tonight, so.
Well, good. Was the zoo crowded?
It was not, so it was awesome.
Very good.
Yeah.
They're, they're not on spring break though yet, are they? Dallas?
No, ma'am, they're not. It's next week, so we, that timing was good.
Very good. Denise, there's a drive-through safari type deal up there too that's really pretty neat.
Yes, I, I wanted to do it, but it was already booked, so we are gonna make a special trip down here for that. I didn't know about it until last week.
Yeah, it's worth it. Yep, the old giraffe stuck his head right in the sunroof.
That's what I heard. And it's the same price whether one or ten of you go together, so.
Right.
We're gonna rebook that. We're gonna think ahead next time. We didn't, we didn't know about it. I think it's called the fossil, fossil rim.
It is.
Yes.
My granddaughter was pretty impressed when that giraffe stuck his.
Oh, I bet.
Head in there.
Well, we did get to see some, some big giraffes yesterday, but that didn't happen.
So impressed. She, she wanted out of that vehicle. She was trying to get away by any means.
Oh, I bet.
Ms. Grimaldo, how are we doing?
Mayor, are you and the councilperson, uh, Willis in the same room? You have the same background?
We are.
Yeah.
We decided to be in the conference room. Boy, that wind is still blowing quite a bit.
Yeah.
Are y'all getting storms? Somebody said y'all were getting storms.
It's just windy.
Yeah.
Sandstorm.
Okay.
But it's been very, very windy.
Ms. Grimaldo, is he, is he still trying?
Yes, sir, he is still trying.
Okay. We're, we're running to the ten-minute mark.
I'll let him know.
Okay. You know, it's only been two days, I think Mark is right. It feels like it's been, uh, seven days in the last two days. I'm ready for bed. I took this whole week off for spring break to take care of the grandkids. I'm done. I'm ready to.
You're ready to go back to work, aren't you?
I'm ready to do something.
I have a nine-year-old, I can drop off.
Uh, right now, we have an eight-month-old, nine-month-old, uh, which we were done today, uh, and then the ten-year-old, the eight-year-old, and the six-year-old. And, uh, we're at the park for about good two, three hours. And all I did was just sit there. I'm tired. So, no, we're, we're, we're recently empty nesters and, uh, so I'm in one of our bedrooms that just, it, it may sound echo because it's, it's unfurnished. We, me and Joanna got to redo the, the room, man, so, now we have a big, big house. We had a house that we didn't fit in. Now it's too much house. I got used to being this empty nester real quick. Mr. Cleaver, is that you, sir? Ms. Grimaldo, how are we doing?
He's still working on it, mayor.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and, we're gonna go ahead and, uh.
I think he's getting, he's coming, coming on.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Can you confirm he's completely on?
Mayor, you can go ahead and get started.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna call the, uh, city council meeting on March ninth, twenty twenty-one at six eleven to order. Uh, we're gonna start by, starting with item number one, the invitation, uh, who we have on today from Casa de mi padre in Odessa, Texas, is Pastor Ernest Flores, who will lead us in prayer. Go ahead and lead us in prayer.
Yes, sir. Uh, I want to say hi to everybody. Pastor Ernest Flores, uh, can you, everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before your presence, giving you honor, glory, praise, and your honor, glory, praise, and your honor, glory. It's opportunity to give a wonderful God to put you first, or anything. And Father, we, uh, we just ask that you correct it. That you give us guidance and, and, and these matters, Father God, that you're involved in it, um, that everything is clear, Father God, from heaven, Father, in the name of Jesus, that, um, um, that everything is, uh, it just fall into place, Father. We, we ask for peace. We ask for, for the move of God in every situation and, 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 and everything that we speak, Father God, that your protection just fall on us in your wisdom and your godly knowledge, Father God. Uh, Father, your word says, um, in Jeremiah twenty-nine eleven, that, uh, that, uh, Father, that you know the plans for us. The declares the Lord plans to prosper, to, to prosper us, not to harm us, but plans to give us a hope in the future and, and Father, that this meeting just go your way in, in the name of Jesus. Father, the second chronicle says, if, if my people shall humble and, and seek my face and pray and turn from, from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and, and, um, and forgive them and, and heal their land. And Father, we need healing in this, in this, in this land, Father God. We need, uh, we need your hand to move in a mighty special way, Father God, uh, here in Odessa, Father God, and, and Father, all, all these people that are connected right now, I ask that you move in a mighty special way in their lives, Father God, that they can make the difference, Father, including myself, Father. In the name of Jesus, we put this in your hands. Amen and amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Very nice. Uh, we're gonna move to item two, to the pledge of the Texas pledge. Councilmember White, will you do the honors, please?
Yes, sir. Please join me in the pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to thee.
The United States of America.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the next, uh, honor the.
All the Texas.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state, under God, and indivisible.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Uh, move on to item three. We have no proclamation for oral presentations, uh, today. Uh, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda, but before we do that, I want to, uh, remind everybody, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of its items on the agenda items before and during this consideration of these items. So, I don't forward the consent agenda. Please, everyone, uh, look over the, uh, the, uh, the consent agenda. If anybody has any questions or comments. Take a moment and then I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Mayor, I move, we accept the consent agenda as written.
Mayor, I will as second.
Thank you very much for identifying yourself. So I have a, uh, motion by Councilman Spars, a second by Councilwoman, uh, Willard to approve the, uh, consent agenda as presented. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 All, all those opposed, consider, uh, state by saying, uh, aye. Motion passes. Uh, we're gonna move on to item number one. Consider economic development agreement between the development corporation and Ellen Noel Art Museum, term in basis. Uh, Mr. Burnett.
Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I, I was under the understanding that the ODC had asked for this item to be tabled for further clarification.
Mayor, I move that we table this, consider, this consideration.
Mayor, I second it.
Excuse me, counsel, if, if I may, we have a speaker request. Don Tucker would like to speak on this item.
Yes, uh, Mr. Uh, go ahead. Uh, you, you sign on to, uh, to comment on this item. Uh, would you go ahead and proceed, please?
Thank you. Uh, I know that y'all are gonna table this, but I did wanna, uh, say that I am against giving money, the taxpayer money to the Ellen Noel because it, it is, y'all can hear me all right, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Because it's a private entity. It's not going to do anything to actually bring business and companies to Odessa. I did, uh, write a email to Mr. Thompson, Mayor Hovon, and Ms. Swanner because I'm in District Two, and I asked that, uh, the funds be not, not be used for this. I have a business and have suffered like everyone else and six hundred thousand dollars. If you're gonna reallocate it for anything, I think it should be used for the citizens of Odessa, like helping the ones that can't afford to fix their, uh, pipes because they busted, or to help them with their higher bills, or maybe even some of their medical bills that they've gotten because of COVID. I, I really think there's better ways to use six hundred thousand dollars than the, uh, Ellen Noel Art Museum. And, uh, I will say that, uh, Mr. Thompson, uh, emailed me back and said that, uh, this was a quality of life issue and that it's one of the things that corporate America looks at when deciding to reopen. Well, I completely disagree with that because I asked for one instance of when a, uh, company, a corporation said they were not gonna come to Odessa because the museum was not updated, and I never got a response. I, I don't think that companies are gonna decide to come to Odessa or not come to Odessa because the Ellen Noel is not updated. Um, I just want everybody to know that our eyes are open and that we are watching what goes on. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Mayor, should I reintroduce my motion?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Councilman Spars, go ahead.
I move that we table this, uh, consideration.
I second it.
Okay, I have a, uh, I have a motion to table item one and second by Councilman Mata. Uh, does he need more, any more discussion?
I would just like to state for the record that the ODC has requested that the art museum be table, uh, for further clarification.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of tabling item one, consider economic development agreement between the Odessa Development Corporation and Ellen, uh, Noel Art Museum, indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed, indicate by saying nay. Motion passes. It is tabled.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Uh, we're gonna move on to item number two. Request the city council to establish a public hearing date to consider the land use assessment, uh, assumptions and the impact fee for capital improvements. Mr. Kerr.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this item is specifically to set a date for a public hearing. The date proposed is April thirteenth. It must be no sooner than thirty days after the council sets the date by resolution. The purpose of the public hearing is to present to this council and public for consideration and receiving comments the land use assumptions and capital improvement plans. The land use assumptions and capital improvement plan are planning tools providing a schedule of projected infrastructure needed to support development over the next ten years. The land used assumptions are projections of growth areas, projecting outside the city limits and population driving infrastructure needs. The capital improvement plan is the plan for water, wastewater, and roadways needed to support that new development. The land use assumptions and capital improvement plans are derived from the city comprehensive master plan, the water master plan, wastewater master plan, and transportation master plan adopted by councils in recent years. State law stipulates that the governing body, this council, set a public hearing date for consideration of the land use assumption and capital improvement plan at least thirty days prior to the date of the meeting. A, a resolution is the instrument that will set the date in compliance with the statute. The date and time set for the hearing is the city council meeting of Tuesday, April thirteenth at six P M. Uh, the resolution is attached. Uh, in addition, for your information, the capital improvements advisory committee will be discussing a schedule to meet the developers, to meet with the developers on the impact fee study at their meeting tomorrow. Uh, we appreciate your consideration. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Does, uh, council have any questions or comments, uh, Mr. Kerr?
So, Tom, uh, on the, that committee, they do believe that April thirteenth is a good date to begin these hearings?
Yes, this is, this is one hearing, uh, that, um, there are two hearings in the total process, but this is one hearing, the first hearing, and, uh, the, the, uh, capital improvements plan, land use assumptions are, um, have been submitted by the committee for the council's consideration. Yes, very.
Uh, Mr. Langriff is on. He's the chairman of the, of the committee. If anybody has any questions. John, you wanna, you wanna weigh in? You got any comments or, uh?
Well, Tom, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor, for having me. Uh, Tom summed that up, uh, exactly, uh, the way that this thing is to proceed. It is statutorily required that we go through many steps. We're, we're adding a step, if you will. We're, we're inviting, we're gonna discuss tomorrow. We've talked about it amongst our, uh, committees, talked to, uh, city manager. Everybody, uh, concurs that we need to get the stakeholders, the, uh, developers and the landowners that are involved, and if you look at those master plans that Tom referred to, they clearly show the growth of Odessa and its natural progression in almost every direction. And so we, we wanna invite the developers, the builders, and the landowners to a informal discussion, if you will, get their input, and we will do that, uh, we plan to do that prior to your public hearing. We didn't want them to hear about it at a public, you know, hearing. We wanna bring them into that process, uh, as soon as we can.
Yes, sir. I really appreciate that. It's something, uh, I have been pushing for, and I really got, you guys commented, accommodated us on that. But, uh, then this is, uh, uh, these are the steps that are required for us to proceed. Uh, this is a very procedural and, uh, in a very tight window, things are how we have to do them.
And, and, the mayor, the, the tight window is just the outline of times. We can push things week or two or a month and, and, and we don't want anyone to feel like anything is being, uh, forced upon anybody. We're, we're looking at it in a very objective way. We have not determined, you know, the amount or where we need to be on impact fees as, uh, I think I told, uh, the council in the workshop. What we're just trying to do is to give you all the tools in your toolbox to help support development and growth of the city of Odessa, and this is just one more option that we have, uh, that, that the city of Odessa has not had in the past. They've had water and sewer rates. They've had general obligation bonds. They've had certificates of obligation. They've had, uh, pro rata. They, they've had a number of things. This does not preclude the use of any of those. This clearly just adds another option that the council may or may not decide to use, but we wanna get everyone's input, look at that, and then gi- give that, uh, option to the council. What you're talk, what you're having this public hearing on is just accepting basically the master plans and, and the land use plan and the capital improvements that need to be built in ten years to support that land use and growth that's projected. So we're not, in this first public hearing that you're talking about setting in April, we're not talking about any dollars and cents at all. It's just accepting the, the land use and, and recognizing those capital improvements that technically you've already recognized when you accepted those master plans of the, that the council and the city paid for in the last two years.
Yes, sir.
Too much information, probably. I apologize.
No, 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 quite right. You know, uh, I think that needed to be said, uh, because the thing is, is that a lot of people were reading a lot of things into it and they'll, 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 they'll believe that the, uh, the April thirteenth means the, the actual meaning for the, uh, for the, uh, the adoption and impact fees, and that's far from it.
That's great.
And so does anybody have any more questions for Mr. Kerr, uh, for, uh, Mr. Langriff? Any comments, any questions?
I'm good with April thirteenth.
Okay, well, sounds good. Then I will.
I'll make a move.
I have a, I have a motion from, uh, Ms. Swanner. Do I have a second?
No, second it.
I got one from, uh, Councilmember Mata, uh, to, uh, so I guess what we're doing is we are going to go ahead and, uh, pass a motion to consider the land use assessment, impact fee, capital improvements for the plan of designated roadways and waterways and wastewater services. Uh, all in favor indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay? Motion passes. Mr. Kerr, thank you very much for that, uh, detailed information. Mr. Langriff, thank you. Uh, continued great work from the, uh, cap improvements and uh, good luck, and I really, uh, thank you for the, um, the meeting you're gonna have with the stakeholders tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, counsel.
Mayor, I apologize. I was muted.
Okay, uh.
It's Councilman Thompson.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Ms. Grimaldo, did you get that, that motion passed by six to one?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you. You voted aye?
It was seven.
It was, it was.
Okay, I'm sorry. My mistake. I, I, I missed her. I thought you voted against it. So it's. Okay, we're going to go, we're going to go to item number three. Consider rescinding barrel declaration of a continued response to COVID nineteen disaster, barrel declaration regarding face coverage declared on November twenty fifth of the year 2020. I'm going to call on our legal department. Ms. Brooks.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. On March second, 2021, Governor Abbott issued executive order G A thirty four effective at twelve oh one A M on March tenth. This executive order fully opens all businesses and ends the statewide mask mandates. So in response to G A thirty four, the city of Odessa is rescinding both the mayoral declaration regarding face coverings and the mayoral declaration of continued response to COVID nineteen disaster. Do you want me to highlight some of the bullet points of what G A thirty four does or?
Yes, would you please?
Okay, so some of the things it does, it rescinded most of the previous orders except for G A ten and G A thirteen. One is the mandatory reporting of COVID nineteen cases, so that will still be in effect. And G A thirteen is prohibits the release of potentially dangerous criminals. And so those are the two that are still in effect. But it strongly encourages individuals to wear face covering over the nose and mouth wherever it is not feasible to maintain six feet of social distancing from another person not in the same household. No person may be required by any jurisdiction to wear or to mandate the wearing of a face mask or face covering. There are no state imposed operating limits for businesses or other establishments. There is not a state imposed requirement to wear a face covering. No jurisdiction may impose a penalty or confinement in jail for violating any COVID nineteen order. However, a legally authorized official may act to enforce trespassing laws and remove violators at the request of a business establishment or other property owner. Businesses or other establishments can require employees or customers to follow additional hygiene measures, including the wearing of face coverings.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Brooks. We do have a citizen that wants to address this item at this moment. Is the citizen that wants to address this item? Ms. Grimaldo, do we have the name?
Don Tucker wishes to speak on this item.
Ms. Tucker, are you still on? You have three minutes. Identify yourself. And, and you can address this, I can address the council.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you all for considering this and I do hope that the face mask mandate or ordinance is rescinded. I am for everybody being safe, but I also am for everyone being able to make a decision about what is best for them. So I just appreciate your time. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Council, do you have any questions? Do you have any comments?
I have comments. I'd just like to, first of all, thank the citizens of Odessa for doing whatever it took to bring the numbers down in our city and county and our community. I'd like to thank the healthcare workers and the doctors and everyone who has played a part and given time that probably could have been spent with their families to help and be a part of the healing process of those who were affected by COVID nineteen. I think our community has done a great job. I'd like to thank the businesses who, and I'm, I'm excited that the businesses can reopen. I'd like to thank those who are able to reopen. And also I'd like to thank those who have made a decision for their business to still require masking. I think we're very close to where we would like to be. I don't think we're there yet. But I do applaud everyone who has played a part in helping to bring our numbers down. I'm proud of our community.
Well noted. Does anybody else do any comments or questions?
Mayor Hoven, I'd like to speak. I'd like to just say I do hope that the citizens of Odessa do, are considerate with each other, with those who which do still wish to wear a mask. You know, there's some people are going to be very uncomfortable not wearing a mask and that's, and that's perfectly fine. Who may have a higher risk of contacting COVID. And I mean, I just hope people who choose not to wear a mask will be considerate, considerate of those and also vice versa, the people who wish to not wear a mask, that the people who do wear a mask will be considerate of them also. And this city has done a great job. And we've come together here recently with the whole winter storm. And we have done a really good job of keeping the city safe as far as the COVID response, you know, the number, the numbers are rated down. Our J RAC numbers are really low right now. So I just, you know, I just want to reiterate that I just, my, my hope and prayer is that nobody gets offended, nobody gets mad, that they just, they just practice, you know, the golden rule, treat each other as they want to be treated. And so that's really all I have to say about it.
Thank you, Councilman Mata. Does anybody else want to weigh in? Okay, I will consider most.
Because both of our hospitals just did a wonderful, wonderful job. I don't think a lot of people recognize the fact that we had a whole lot of FEMA nurses in here. While I was confined in the hospital for thirty six, ICU for thirty six days, I had a round the clock help, FEMA nurses from Atlanta, one from New Orleans, and they are just fabulous. And I can't tell you how wonderful it was to have experienced people and, and the other staff, the regular staff at the hospital. O R M C was just, just fantastic. So it's, it's a, it's a bad experience. I hope nobody has to go what I, what I had to go through. But I will tell you that if you don't want it, I can promise you that. But anyway, we had some great people in here and, and Dr. Dar, who was, who was overseeing both hospitals. He's a pulmonologist and he was running both hospitals at the same time and overseeing all the COVID cases. And he's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful physician. And we're, we're lucky to have him in Odessa, Texas. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Thompson. I will now consider a motion of rescinding the mayoral declaration of a continued response to COVID nineteen disaster and the mayoral declaration regarding face coverings that was declared on November twenty fifth of 2020. Do I have a motion and a second for rescinding both? I have a motion by Councilman Thompson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Sprouls. All in favor indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against indicated by saying nay?
Nay.
Nara Willis.
We have a motion passes by six to one. And thank you, Council, for those comments and weighing in. Thank you very much. Move on to item four. I have nothing on there. Does anybody have any weight in on the item four? I'm sorry, did somebody say something? Okay, we're going to move on to item five, appointments of boards. Ms. Grimaldo, you are, this is going to be extensive.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We do have a citizens that wish to speak on this item. We have Larry Robertson.
Mr. Robinson, I'm sorry about that. Go right ahead.
Yes, I've made an application for the E D board. And it would be my pleasure to be appointed to the board. I've been watching over E D C for quite a while. Can, is you okay? Yes. You have audio? Yes. Okay, and I've been, been asked by the mayor to, if I was interested in doing this. And I'd be extremely interested in doing it and I'd appreciate it if I got an appointment to the board.
Thank you, sir.
People don't know me. I've, I've lived here all my life. I've been here seventy two years. Had several businesses in Odessa. I currently have three different corporations that I manage, real estate, finance and some other businesses. But I think I could good, do a good job and be a good steward of the money that comes in to the E D C. And I'd appreciate your support of this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Grimaldo, would you go ahead and proceed? Can you hear me?
Norma, I think you're muted.
Okay, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can now. I thought it was me. I kept going back and forth.
I'm going to give y'all the names that the council members responded to the emails. Not all of them have responded and not all of them have the majority for to appoint the appointees. So we'll go take it, the animal shelter. We have Ms. Baker and Ms. Odom, Ms. Trower and Ms. Coates, Mr. Tim Harry and Connie Coates. So we only have two for Connie Coates. And everybody else was one. And then we had some council members that did not respond.
Anybody, whoever didn't respond, do you want to make a, make a, make a recommendation?
The people that did not respond were council members Mata, Thompson, White and White. And it's a member Swanner for this particular board.
For animal shelter.
Connie Coates is fine.
I'm fine with Connie Coates.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
I apologize. I thought I'd sent that one in.
There, there were a lot. Okay, we have one, two. We have Connie Coates.
Connie Coates.
We just need a confirmation if we're going to keep Joyce Trower or appoint somebody different.
I would prefer to keep Joyce Trower. She has been on the committee for a while and I think has some experience with them.
She showed interest of, is that correct?
Yes.
So that gets, how many, how many do you have for Ms. Trower? Two?
Two. Joyce is fine for me also.
It's three.
Yeah, I'm fine with those two.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, for the building board of appeals, we have a majority to appoint Mark Darville to serve in the position of the plumber. And for the other ones, we didn't get a majority for reappointments on David McGuire, who serves as building construction, Edwin Earl Maroney for mechanical contractor and Jerry Morales as a citizen.
Norma, have they said that they would like to continue?
We have not been able, they have not responded to our contact. So they have not responded. But it's been a while since the board has met.
Not either of them. Okay.
The, the difficulty in this is finding a qualified person that fills the requirements. This board is very specific.
Right. I'm happy with leaving them.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, you miss a meaning, you get appointed.
Okay, thank you. So.
Norma, yes.
Is Mark replacing Max Dahl?
That would be correct, yes. We had four council members that recommended Mark Darville. Okay, so we'll, we'll do a reappointment of David McGuire, Edwin Carl Maroney and Jerry Morales as alternate and appoint Mark Darville.
Correct.
Councilmember Thompson, do you have an appointment for the citizens' golf? Elva Graham, okay. For the Odessa Development Corporation, for the at large, the appointment would be Jeff Russell. And for the mayor's position, appoint Larry Robinson. For the Midland Odessa Urban Transit District, I have to appoint Susan Gentry to replace Thomas Blackstone. And at this point, I have three council members that nominated Brady Ross, who is the current member. And I have one council member that recommended Tim Harry. And the council members that have not responded were Councilmember Thompson and Councilmember White.
I would be in favor of Brady Ross staying with.
Okay, that will get us four to reappoint Brady Ross.
I didn't know any of those folks, so I, I can't.
Okay, thank you. Okay, for the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation, I've got four council members that recommended to appoint Peggy Dean. For the zoning board of adjustment, we had a split vote there. Three council members voted for Wayne Russell. Three council members voted for Priscilla Contreras. And I had one council member that voted for Craig Stoker. And we need two members to serve as alternate members to this particular board.
What do you need us to?
If I, a council member. I'm sorry, you broke out, Councilman.
Could we make Craig Stoker the alternate?
Yeah, we need two, two members as alternates.
Two.
Yes, sir.
Can you carefully, can you carefully, the, it broke up. I didn't hear that, Norma. What was that?
Okay, so now we have three for Stoker, three for Wayne Russell and three for Priscilla Contreras. And I need two members.
We got a three, we got a three horse race and they're all tied.
How are we breaking?
Well, I will say that council members Mata, Thompson, White and Swan are only voted for one person. So if I could get another name from them, because the other ones, y'all did vote for two, I think that will make it to where we could find our two alternates.
I would place my vote for Priscilla.
I'll vote for Priscilla.
I'm okay with Craig Stoker. Dude, is that what you need?
Yes, I already have you down for Craig Stoker.
Okay.
So I've got a for Priscilla Contreras to serve as the zoning board of adjustment. I just need one more. I have three for Wayne Russell and three for Craig Stoker. Councilmember Mata, could you provide me another name?
I'll go for Priscilla.
We still seem to be at three and three, three for Wayne Russell and three for Craig Stoker.
You have made down for Craig, don't you, Deitra?
Yes, I have Councilmember Thompson, White and Swan for Craig Stoker.
And I had voted for, I, I mean, I had submitted Craig Stoker.
Yes, yes, ma'am, you did. Okay. Yes. Yes, ma'am, you did. Okay. So I have four. So that would bring me to Craig Stoker and Priscilla Contreras to serve as an alternate members.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
No, it's quite right. It can get confusing.
Don't have to do that while, right?
You're right. If I could get a motion to make it, to have these appointments made, please.
Mayor Willis so moved.
Uh, I have a motion by Councilwoman Willis, second by Mr. Thompson. All those in favor indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those again, indicated by saying nay? Motion passes. Uh, we're going to item six, citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Ms. Grimaldo, do you have anybody that signed up for this item?
Uh, no, sir. I've already.
Okay. Uh, we're going to item seven. I'll consider a motion and a second to recess for executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, section five five one, point zero seven one, uh, to consult with attorneys. The city council may adjourn into the, consider pending, uh, contemplated litigation in the future to open the action. So I have a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Who make the motion?
Denise.
Denise Swanner.
Denise, I have a motion by Denise. I have a second by.
Deitra.
And Ms. White. All those in favor indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
All those against indicated by saying nay? Motion. We are in executive session.
Council, if you'll log off and join the meeting from the meeting invite that I sent you for executive session on Friday. Thank you.
Now I'm challenged again.
Council, Councilmember Thompson, I will resend you that invite link.
Okay. Thanks. I'm always challenged. We got somebody in here shouldn't be in here. Larry?
Boy, I got back over quicker than I left the last time.
We got.
I lose what?
Okay. So the, we're waiting on Councilman Thompson.
Hey, guys, I'm gonna go ahead and go out. I know y'all can adjourn without me. See y'all next week.
Have fun.
Thank you.
So, Councilman Thompson's still not on?
He is not on, sir.
Okay. Think maybe having a little difficulty.
You're muted, Deitra.
Get you to reach my lips. Uh, don't we have enough though that we can go on, come back?
Yes, we can. I'll entertain a motion and a second to, to re, uh, rejoin the, uh, the general, uh, session of the city council.
I'm a.
I second.
We come out of executive session?
I second.
And I have second by Mrs., uh, Ms. Willis. All in favor indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay? We are back into, uh, final session. Uh, so we did, took no action in the executive session. Uh, so we can go ahead and move on with, uh, with, uh, move on. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and move on to, uh, item number eight. Uh, do I have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council meeting?
Don't move.
I make a motion, will you adjourn?
I have a motion by Ms. White. I have a, a second by Mr. Mata. All those in favor indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay? Motion passes. We are adjourned.
Goodbye, everyone.
Have a good evening.
Okay.